Can you please join me for this flag salute?
Let's do the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Councilmember Losi.
Here.
Councilmember Mobley.
Here.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Trent.
Here.
We're going to go down to item C on our presentation so we can get our officers back on the street out there protecting us.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Trent and Honorable City Council, ladies and gentlemen. It is an honor to publicly celebrate a significant achievement within the police department. It is with great pride that we recognize the outstanding dedication and commitment to professional development demonstrated by two of our exemplary sergeants. They're with us tonight, Sergeant Primafuri and Sergeant Finney. Today, we honor the sergeants who have recently completed the rigorous Sherman Block Supervisory Leadership Institute. This prestigious and rigorous eight-month program known for its demanding curriculum and emphasis on leadership, ethics, and community-focused policing is a testament to their unwavering dedication to personal and professional growth. The completion of this program is not just a milestone for Sergeant Finney or Sergeant Primafuri, but a testament to their commitment to excellence. They have invested both their time and energy into enhancing their leadership skills, gaining valuable insights that will benefit not only their careers, but also the entire department and, most importantly, the community they serve. Through this achievement, they have demonstrated the core values of our department and a continuous pursuit of excellence. Their newfound knowledge and skills will undoubtedly lead to more effective supervision, better decision-making, and an overall stronger team dynamic within our ranks. Sergeant Finney and Sergeant Primafuri, your accomplishments set a high standard for your colleagues and serve as an inspiration to all of us. Your commitment to growth and development exemplifies what it means to be true leaders in law enforcement. On behalf of the entire department, I am honored to present you both with a commendation for professional development. Congratulations on your well-deserved success, and thank you for your exemplary service and dedication to making our community safer and stronger.
Councilmembers, thank you for your support to our chief's vision and chief to our department for allowing us to further our careers and go to this truly life-changing class. And lastly, but mostly, I'd like to say thank you to my wife for dealing with the family and work for eight months while I was gone at this class. No small feat. The lessons that we learned from this class, I could talk about for hours, but the networking at an admin level, the self-reflective, finding out where we need to improve as supervisors and how we can do better for our people, as well as strategies to anticipate problems before they become a major problem, and how to address those with small steps over a long period of time were key points that we learned in this class. Thank you again.
Mayor and councilmembers, thank you again. This was a great opportunity for us to, like Sergeant Finney said, network, learn new things, reflect on ourselves, and I couldn't know, none of us could have done it without our family's support at home. My wife was a rock star, gone four days out of the week or every month, getting the kids where they needed to go. We're not able to do this job without our family's support at home, and not only in this instance when we get called out in the middle of the night, especially in an agency like this where it's going to happen. And, you know, this class, to me, made me look into the future of what we have to look forward to as a Fortuna Police Department. The requirements, at the end of the eight weeks, we saw that we had read 14 books, probably wrote 20, 25-plus papers, which was a whole new experience for me, but it was great. I learned so much, and hopefully the things that we learned, we can see implemented back here to make this a better place for our people and the community. So, thank you.
Sergeant Finney and Sergeant Primafuri, thank you very much, and thank your families, and we are very proud of you. Okay, now we'll move to the introduction of street maintenance work, worker two.
Good evening, council members, honorable mayor, and congrats to our sergeants, and that's, that's great news. That's awesome. So, tonight, I just wanted to introduce to our new staff member on the general services, Jeff Sterling. He moved from, to this area 36 years ago from Idaho, and he basically has resided in Redcrest and has had his family down in Soham. He volunteers with baseball, South Fork baseball and South Fork basketball. And, but really drawing him to this area was the, the trees, the rivers, the community, and the aspects of that. So, that's what drew him here 36 years ago. He has grandkids and a great-grandson, and just for now, I just want to introduce you, Jeff Sterling. Come on up, Jeff.
I'd like to say I appreciate the opportunity to work for Fortuna. I have raised my family in Humboldt County ever since I've come into this area. It's a wonderful place. I'd like to keep it this way, and I would like to work hard and keep this community clean. My kids, the parks, they've grown up around here. They've gone to the schools here, and it's a great opportunity. I'd like to see it stay that way, and I appreciate the work, and thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Okay, and next we have a proclamation for Lemonade Day.
In recognition of Lemonade Day, June 1st, 2024, whereas Lemonade Day is a free, community-wide educational event providing children with the opportunity to learn and apply entrepreneurial thinking and create a foundation for success in the global economy, and whereas Lemonade Day exists to infuse today's youth with the spirit of enterprise, teaching the basic business and entrepreneurial skills necessary to become successful contributing members of the community, and whereas Lemonade Day has a core philosophy of spend, save, and share that is implemented by teaching children how to manage their money by establishing a budget, seeking investors, paying for their own expenses, saving part of their profits, and giving back to the community, and whereas Lemonade Day offers opportunities for families, businesses, schools, youth organizations, faith-based communities, neighborhoods, institutes of higher learning, economic development, and government agencies to unite for a common purpose, to train the next generation of entrepreneurs, and whereas the city of Fortuna commends the volunteers and participants of Lemonade Day and extends best wishes for a successful and rewarding event, now therefore Tammy Trent, Mayor of Fortuna, does hereby proclaim June 1st, 2024 as Lemonade Day in the city of Fortuna, and urge all citizens to participate by either buying or helping children sell lemonade. Sign this 20th day of May, 2024, City of Fortuna.
And I also just wanted to say Lemonade Day will be the same day as our citywide yard sales. So, if you're out going to the yard sales and see the lemonade, please stop and support these young people. There will also be a list of the lemonade stands in the North Coast Journal, and anybody from the lemonade stands, Quintel Relity is doing a sponsorship, so if you're interested, you can contact them and they'll sponsor our some of these. And I'm looking forward to going out and visiting as many of these as I can. So, I'll hand out this proclamation.
Thank you all.
Well, those were a lot of words you just said. Thank you.
I didn't get the memo. I will say that there is a, a new board that's convening. Humboldt Lemonade Day has, it's a national movement, and it's a franchise at this point, and the communities that want to do Lemonade Day are paying into that franchise to participate. And we've decided here locally that we probably don't need that support from the national level, so we're going to start a youth entrepreneur program. We're starting a 501(c)(3) that will be operating throughout the year. We're hoping to have opportunities for kids to learn entrepreneur skills and sell online at local arts and crafts festivals and in some of these great stores that are now opening up to multiple artists like Makers on Main and, and our little gift store. So, this is just the beginning. So, thank you for your support. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have oral comments from the public. If anybody would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, you'll have three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Consent calendar, would anybody like to poll any of them? Do we have a motion to?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Are y'all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to city council business. Our first item is transaction and use tax measure, Resolution 2024-11. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. I'll provide a little bit of an introduction, and I'll hand it off to our city attorney to review the attachments, the ordinance and, and resolution. So, very briefly, staff's recommendation is to receive a report from staff regarding a proposed ballot measure to increase the existing transaction use tax within the city from 0.75% to 1.5% to continue funding essential services, to receive public comment, and then to have a discussion of the proposed tax measure, and then introduce by, by, on first reading by title only and submit to the voters, ordinance number 769, and ordinance of the city of Fortuna to increase the city of Fortuna transaction use tax to be administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, subject to approval of the majority of the electors voting on the tax measure at the general, general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, and to adopt Resolution 2024-11, and that submits ordinance 769 to the qualified voters for the November 5th general election, requests the election on the ordinance to be consolidated with a state-wide general election, sets the dates for submission of arguments for and against the proposed tax measure, sets the dates for submission of rebuttal arguments, authorizes the mayor to submit a written argument in favor of the measure on behalf of the council, and requests that the city attorney prepare an impartial analysis of the measure, and agrees to reimburse the county for costs for conducting the election on the measure. There's, in the executive summary in the staff report, there's a background. We've reviewed that at a number of previous city council meetings, so I'm not going to review all the reasons why the city feels the tax is necessary, but it's included in the staff report. The councils discussed the language at previous meetings and workshops, including a study session held on April 1st, 2024, at which the council expressed its desire to amend Chapter 3.13 of the Fortuna Municipal Code to increase the current rate of the tax from 0.75 to 1.5%. It was discussed again at the regular city council meeting held on April 15th, 2024, and the council reviewed the language of the proposed ordinance and resolution, and then it was reviewed again at a special budget workshop on May 2nd, when the council reviewed and provided direction to the staff as to the ballot question. The draft resolution in the staff report incorporates the council's revision. I think the language is in the staff report that is, is consistent with what the council's requests are at the last meeting, and the primary change was the language. I can read it if you would like, but the, the language now for the ballot measure reads as follows: "To improve and maintain essential services, including police services, nuisance abatement, streets, sidewalk, and drainage, park improvement, and programs for youth and seniors shall the measure to increase the existing transaction and use tax from 0.75% to 1.5% through March 31st, 2033, unless sooner repealed, providing an additional 1.8 million in annual revenue, requiring an independent audit and community oversight by the Measure E Committee, with all funds remaining in Fortuna to be adopted." And so, with that, I'll, I'll hand it to Ryan. I don't know if, Ryan, you have more to say to discuss the ordinance and resolution?
Yeah, thanks, Merritt, and good evening. I, I will say that I, I will say that we need to approve this on a two-step process tonight. The first is we need to introduce and conduct a first reading of the ordinance. And that's the, on the staff recommendation, that's point four, which is to move to introduce and read by title only the proposed ordinance. We don't need a second reading, as we'd normally do with an ordinance, because this is proposed to the voters. And if the voters pass it by more than 50%, then it is considered adopted at that time. So this is the, the first and only action that the council will take to approve the ordinance. The second action is the adoption of the resolution. And that can be done through normal motion practice. And that resolution will then be transmitted to the county of Humboldt. It'll go on the Board of Supervisors' agenda for approval as to the consolidation request. That resolution also sets dates for arguments in favor of the measure, which we'd like to work with the mayor on, to get that prepared in the timeline set by the Elections Office. I will prepare an impartial analysis of the measure, and that will also be printed in the, the ballot pamphlet. And most importantly, as Merritt read, it does set forth the council's preferred ballot title and question that will be printed in the, on the ballot itself. And we had a seventy-five-word max, and I think we used seventy-four. So we came in just under the wire there. So I'm happy to stop there, and obviously I'll be here to kind of walk the council through the process that will be required to adopt each of the steps.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions from council?
Just to comment, it seems like you've incorporated all of the language and stuff that we brought up the last time and made it clear. It's an open question to ask, they can understand. I would ask one thing, and that is how the California Business Roundtable, would it affect this at all if it were to pass?
It's hard to say. There's so much unknown with the California Business Roundtable and whether or not it will move forward. There is some, there is a case working its way through the Supreme Court right now of California that would affect some tax measures that were adopted all the way back to 2015, but that is expected to fail. We're still waiting for an opinion on that particular court case, but it's hard to speculate on the California Business Roundtable.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, we'll open public comment. Anybody from the public like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to introduce on the first reading by title only and submit to the voters, Ordinance Number 769.
I'll second. Okay, roll call, please.
Ordinance 2024-769, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Fortuna to increase the existing city of Fortuna transaction and use tax to be administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, subject to approval of a majority of the electors voting on the tax measure at the general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 5th, 2024. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes.
Okay, anyone want to make the next one?
I make a motion that we move to adopt Resolution Number 2024-11.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Resolution 2024-11, a resolution of the city council of the city of Fortuna, ordering the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Fortuna, a certain measure relating to a proposed ordinance, amending Chapter 3.13 to Title III of the Fortuna Municipal Code, increasing the city's transaction and use tax by three-quarters of 1% for general purposes at the general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, as called and proposed to the qualified electors by resolution, directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis of the measure, setting the dates for arguments on the measure, and requesting the Board of Supervisors of the county of Humboldt to consolidate said election pursuant to Section 10403 of the Elections Code. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to our next item of business, which is the Fortuna Business Improvement District Annual Report.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. So staff's recommendation is that the council accept with or without modification the Fortuna Business Improvement District Annual Report and provide direction on the proposed changes to the assessment levied on businesses within the city. And I'm just going to go through a little bit of the background with the executive summary. I think it's good to, to, to be briefed on this. The Fortuna Business Improvement District was established by the city in 1990 under the Parking and Business Improvement Area Law of 1989 to benefit and promote the city's businesses. Under the enabling statute, the council is required to approve an annual report that contains the following information every year. Any proposed changes in the boundaries of Fbid, which is the Fortuna Business Improvement District, or any benefit zones within the area. The improvement and activities provided for that fiscal year. An estimate of the cost of providing the improvements and activities for that fiscal year. The method and basis of levying the assessment in sufficient detail to allow each business owner to estimate the amount of the assessment to be levied against his or her business for that fiscal year. The amount of any surplus or deficit revenues to be carried over from the previous fiscal year. And the amount of any contributions to be made from sources other than benefits levied pursuant to this part. The annual report is required to be presented to the council during the council meeting in written and oral form. The council may approve the report as filed or may modify the report and approve as modified. And as noted above, Fbid was established through the city for the purpose of imposing benefit assessments and charges on businesses for certain identified purposes, including the promotion of public events, which are to take place in, on or in public places in the district, decoration of any public place in the district, furnishing of music in any public place within the district, the general promotion of business activities within the district, and marketing to fill available space, recruiting and expansion of commercial enterprise. There's a list in the staff report of advisory committee members that are tasked with advising the city council. And that includes representatives from downtown, one from Redwood Village Shopping Center, one citywide representative, Strong Street Shopping Center representative, one representative designated by the council, and one nominated by the Chamber of Commerce, and one by, one nominated by the remaining members. There are no proposed changes in the Fbid boundaries. However, it's recommended that the council remove the core area designations for the downtown core area, the Strong Street Core area, and the Redwood Village Core area. And I'll explain a little bit more about that in a minute. The summary of activities, there's a list provided within the staff report. There's a number of events that are listed and other supporting activities that the bid participated in. Those included supporting Fortuna Rotary Art and Wine in the Park, cleaning out the storage unit that was currently owned by Fbid and transferring that to the downtown merchants, merchants, maintaining a list of open buildings for lease and for sale to make that available for businesses interested in locating in the city, updating and maintaining the annual budget, and projecting the budget for next year. Ongoing newsletter write-up, contributing to the Chamber Newsletter, a section on Fbid. The bids supported Art and Wine in the Park. It hosted rodeo week activities at Redwood Village on July 11th. Let's see. There is a line in there that said the bid supported and promoted hops, but I did have a comment and a request to remove that from the annual report, because I think the Fbid director participated, but there's a whole board and a pretty heavy, a, a large group of volunteers. And so they, they asked that that be removed, just to clarify that there is a large group, and it really isn't just a bid-supported event. The Apple Harvest Festival, there's, there was assistance from the bid to coordinate the Apple Harvest Festival, rent the People Mover, and to help coordinate those events, events at Redwood Village Shopping Center. That included seventeen vendors and three music acts for the community to enjoy. The bid hosted on December 8th, the Al Gray Lighted Parade, which was moved to Main Street this year, and I think very successful. On December 9th, the bid hosted the Kids Free Movie at the Fireman's Pavilion. And then in November and December, they organized the Shop Fortuna for the Holidays. And then the bid developed and maintained social media to outreach and inform businesses in the community, promote events, specials, interviewed owners and staff of businesses, and recognized newly opened businesses, and maintained the city's, the bid's Instagram, Facebook, TikTok, and other social media platforms. With regard to the budget, the advisory committee reviewed the rec, and recommended that the council accept the annual report and budget for Fbid on March 26th. The proposed budget for the next fiscal year will be approved with the city's annual budget. It will depend partly on how the assessment is levied. The total expenditures for fiscal year 2023-24 was $47,871. The assessment generated approximately $65,000, and the council budgeted a contribution of $50,000 for a total revenue of $115,000. One of the primary reasons for expenditures being less is our Fbid coordinator is moving on to other employment. So she ended up working significantly less hours than it was expected in the budget. So most of the savings comes from salary savings for less hours worked. The total surplus for the fiscal year was $67,726. The unused $50,000 designated by the city will be returned to the city's general fund. The proceeds from the Fbid assessment and the amount of $17,726 will be retained in the Fbid fund and dedic, and used in the future for Fbid dedicated purposes. With regard to the levy of assessment, this is really where the more significant change in council input is needed. But the advisory committee met on April 17th and April 23rd and considered multiple options for how the assessment should be renewed for fiscal year 2020, 24, 25. And, and generally, going to a simplified assessment model with a flat rate was desired by the city to simplify the business license process. Currently, the assessment structure is complicated geograph, and geographically based, revenue-based, forcing businesses to apply for their licenses in person. And that, when, when businesses come in to apply for those licenses, oftentimes they express their displeasure at having to pay another fee for Fbid and, and have a lot of questions about what they, they see from that. There's a summary. Really, there's a lot of, there were a lot of thoughts expressed at the meeting, and a lot of questions about Fbid's efficacy and how it should proceed moving forward. But I'll just read through some of those general comments that were expressed at the meeting and the advisory committee meetings. But a lot of businesses don't perceive the benefit for the assessment, and many businesses express their displeasure when obtaining their business licenses. The downtown merchants use their assessment to pay for fees and other expenses for their events, but generally don't appreciate the efforts of the bid to organize events in the downtown area. There are many activities of the bid were challenging to put on and may not have provided the benefit valued by those assessed. Some events, such as Al Gray Lighted Parade, that are appreciated by the community may be better handled as a tourism and marketing effort, using Measure W funds and working with the Chamber Tourism Marketing Committee. The amount of funding for Redwood Village and Strong Street Core Areas, the amount returned to those areas is not enough really to have those organizations justify organizing a nonprofit and having regular meetings. There's a table in the staff report, so annually, the distribution to the core area for Redwood Village is $6,200, and the distribution to Strong Street is $3,100. And so it's really not a lot of money and doesn't really warrant organizing a nonprofit, having committee meetings, subcommittee meetings, to spend that small amount of funding. And that's one of the primary reasons we're not recommending continuing those core areas. It's just not enough money to be able to, to use to great benefit. It's been challenging to get participation. Fbid did use some of the funds derived, assessed to Redwood Village businesses to host events, such as the, the events surrounding rodeos. But there were very few, there were no businesses that committed time to help organize events. Businesses came out and, and, and were active having booths, but it was very challenging with Fbid with only one employee to be able to put on an event like that. And so they relied on friends and family to try to do that. But it, it was very difficult to put those events on without the direct participation from some of the businesses there. The input from businesses in the downtown core area were mixed. Some expressed the need for the assessment and funding to pay for things like liability insurance and, and the storage unit and things that the downtown merchants rely on. But then others just wished for it to be discontinued and say that, and stated that their businesses really didn't see a lot of benefit from that. One of the more interesting comments, it came from Doug Strel, who's been around for a long time, former mayor, council member, planning commissioner. And he expressed that in the past, what Fbid did that really seemed to work well and, and had a lot of buy-in is different community groups or business groups would come to the Business Improvement District meetings, and they have an idea of an event that they could do to help promote business. And one example was, I think it was Auto Rama initially, now Auto Expo, but there were community groups or business groups that came and want to hold an event. They would come to Fbid for seed money to be able to support those events while they were getting started. I think we have a number of great community-driven events. You know, the 3rd of July is an example. Mentioned Art and Wine in the Park is an example. Hops in Humboldt is an example. The events that seem to be working really well are those ones that have community energy and effort put behind them. And so, you know, that's, that's why one of the recommendations is to not have an Fbid staff member in the future, but to really pass any funds derived from Fbid through to help be seed money for community-based and funded, community-based efforts to, to do, whether it's decorations, or whether it's a festival, or whether it's music, to really support those business-led ones. Because it just became really obvious that to have a Fbid administrator trying to push these events or organize these events, it just really wasn't met with a lot of appreciation for that effort. Following the discussion, the committee discussed three basic options for levying an assessment moving forward. One of those was to keep the assessment as is. Another was to discontinue the assessment in Fbid. And the last one was to assess a flat rate to all businesses citywide and eliminate the core areas. There was general consensus from the committee that the Fbid assessment should not be kept as is, currently established primarily because of the perceived limited benefit to the businesses assessed, and the general consensus that the bid was not recognized for being effective to provide the benefits to the entire citywide area. It was also noted that the time and effort to manage a Redwood Village and Strong Street Core Areas would take more effort than it was worth to really manage a small amount of funds. Again, around $6,000 for Redwood Village and $3,100 for Strong Street. Although there wasn't great support to keep the bid at the meetings, the committee was reluctant to recommend discontinuing the assessment altogether, as representatives from the downtown core area expressed a desire to keep the funding from the assessment to pay for costs associated with events put on in the downtown area. It was a consensus of the committee and the recommendation of the committee that the assessment should be on a flat-rate basis and be the same for all areas of the city and the core areas eliminated. The primary reasons being that it would simplify the process for obtaining business licenses, provide funding for some of the ongoing events to put up in the downtown area, as well as the Al Gray Lighted Parade, which was very popular. The recommended assessment proposed by the advisory committee was $100 per business, regardless of revenue. However, the advisory committee was not presented with any data regarding the number of businesses, how much each paid, and how the proposed flat rate would be perceived by a majority of the businesses that pay the lowest amount and now could pay a significant increase. And I'll give you a little more information on that in a moment. But I think had the committee had the information on how many businesses are assessed and at what rate, I think it likely would have not considered charging such a high flat rate of $100, and they would have proposed a lesser amount. In the staff report, you can see that there's a chart that shows the distribution of businesses categorized by how much they pay for the Fbid assessment. And I'll just read a few of those off. The highest percentages of businesses are assessed the minimum assessment of $11, and that's 24% of the businesses assessed. The next five highest percentages of businesses that are assessed, you know, so the, the most businesses pay the next amount is $16.50 a year. The next highest amount is 10.3 at $24.75. So 10.3% of the businesses pay $24.75, and 10.6 of the businesses pay $35.75, and 7.7% of the businesses pay $46.75. And 6.4% of the businesses pay $88. So therefore, approximately 76% of the businesses pay an amount of $90.75 or less, and 24% of our businesses pay $100. of our businesses pay $120.75 or more. A $100 flat rate would result in approximately $66,000 in revenue being generated annually. It's likely that a flat fee of this rate would be opposed by many businesses that are currently paying significantly less and supported by the businesses who pay more. So, again, 24% of the businesses that pay more than $100 probably think $100 flat rate would be great, but the 76% of businesses that currently pay less would probably not like it. And again, anecdotally, just hearing the, you know, the complaints or issues posed at our front counter by business owners when they're paying assessment, it's interesting if you look at, you know, the most businesses paying the $11, that corresponds to a $10,000 or less gross revenue a year, so a pretty low number, but I think it's a sign that those businesses coming in and reporting their gross income just are not interested in paying that F-Bid assessment. Given that there's not a high level of support for the bid currently in the community, it's the opinion of staff that the city should reduce its efforts and not hire staff for the express purpose of F-Bid and that the council either assess the businesses a lower flat rate of $25 or less or eliminate and eliminate the core areas or not levy assessment at all. If the assessment is reduced to a $25 flat fee and the core areas are removed, approximately $16,500 would be generated annually. This could cover seed money for events or could be used to cover some of the costs to the downtown merchants to pay for event insurance, storage, or other low-cost projects or decorations. Additionally, other groups could request funding for new events or financial support for other activities consistent with the city's municipal code on the purpose of F-Bid. Under this model, the city would not have a staff person, would not organize events using funds from the F-Bid assessment. The city could use the funds that historically had been allocated from the general fund to match F-Bid funding for other community promotion and beautification activities. So, for example, if the city, city staff wanted to continue and continue to add banners and or add poles, the city could use that money that's historically been set aside for community promotion but not run it through the bid. One of the other things the council could do, if they do see a lot of demands for the funding that would be generated from a flat fee of $25, the council could increase that again in the future, but you could wait and see how much community interest there is in those funds. I suspect downtown merchants request most or if not all of that, and that we'd see very few other requests, although it's possible that we could see organizers of events wanting to come and get help for insurance or 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 money to help with the events that perhaps are currently happening. So, this is an item that staff is seeking direction on from the council. How much should they levy, how much of an assessment should they levy on the city's So, the recommendation from, again, the staff's recommendation differs from the committee recommendation, because I don't think the committee would have voted to or recommend a $100 flat fee had they known the distribution of those businesses. So, staff is is recommending that the council either assess a flat fee of $25 or not levy assessment at all. With that, I'll pause there for any questions from the council. And I know there's a lot of information there, but I, you know, it's required to to go through this annual report, both orally and inhabit in writing, and so I wanted to make sure that that all that information was out there. And I'd say that Councilmember Mobley, she is the representative and probably has some other input on the discussion at the meetings.
Yeah, I was one of the businesses that said, we don't get anything for what what we pay in the assessment. So, I said it should be a flat fee across the board for everybody. There was a lot of from downtown merchants. There, there of course were some complaints because they get the biggest chunk of money, but there, on the other hand, there was a whole group from downtown that said it doesn't do anything for their business either. So, I think to make it fair to everybody and for the ease of city in processing the business licenses, it would be easier just to have a flat fee.
Any other?
Just a couple of questions and then a comment. So, if there was a flat fee of $25 per business, who would do the bookkeeping on that? Would we just hand it over to whoever is at that point the F-Bid committee or how would that be handled?
So, the city would still administer those funds and they treat it as a fund. We wouldn't have an employee, but we would organize. I'd work with the city clerk to organize the F-Bid committee meetings. I would probably reduce those to quarterly meetings, so we wouldn't have to have those quite so often, but the city manager would be the lead and then we would have quarterly meetings where requests could be made, but we'd greatly scale back what the staff effort is to promote, put on events, maintain the social media. It would really just be a kind of a scaled back effort on behalf of the city. And I mean, the real purpose is just to preserve those funds for the downtown area or others who might need those for some of the events and activities that they put on.
When I first got elected, my first term in 2011, I was the selected as the council's representative for F-Bid, for the F-Bid committee. So, I took several recommendations from the council to the committee, after which I was told that I talked too much and provided too much recommendation and suggestions to them. So, I didn't think I talked too much, but they obviously kind of did. Ever since, I, you know, the, the one thing F-Bid has been is just up and down with regard to how much participation all of the different core areas have. Some of the core areas, like the downtown businesses, you get maybe a half dozen that are really involved. The rest of the core areas, there are years when they aren't involved at all, and it's a lot of time that the city has put into this and staff time. And it's one of those things that I have questioned the value of having F-Bid, and I think that at the very least, reduce staff involvement, reduce city involvement in F-Bid would be a good thing. I thought maybe eliminating the fee, the assessment altogether, but if there are businesses that need that money for insurance purposes, I could understand that and maybe that would be a good thing. So, that's, I'm, I'm not going to talk too much.
Can I respond to that? One of our things, thinking of having a flat fee assessment, is making maybe a donation to the Garden Club, because they do beautify downtown. Being able to purchase banners and decorations or make, you know, just things like that that would help the community overall. So, that was one of our, our talking points when we were thinking of doing a flat fee.
I think if you decide to do a flat fee, you're going to actually, I would, my guess would be at least 90% of the businesses will complain about, I mean, they complain about paying $11, going up to 25. And we'll, we'll hear from Rachel, I want to hear your opinion on this. She's the one that has to come to the counter and deal with all of, all of this. I would say 90% of the people or the businesses would want this gone. So, if we decided to do a flat fee, you know, it needs to be, because everybody says, well, this does nothing for me, you know, all these businesses. So, they need to know that, okay, this is going to help with the Garden Club who beautifies. This is going to help with, you know, they need to know what they're, what they're paying for, and then they might not have a complaint, but as of just having to pay this, so downtown merchants can have an event once in a while, it's not going to go over good.
We, we talked about that, having a flyer that the, the front desk could hand out to people who asked and say if they wanted to put on an event and and pay for their insurance, like July 3rd, or rent something, then we could help. They could solicit funds from F-Bid and then it would be voted on during the meetings. But we did talk about that. We needed to have a flyer, one-page flyer that just says what, what that money's going towards.
Did anybody talk about coming and speaking here or speaking up and saying, hey, we don't want this?
Or saying that they do want it.
Well, there's some that say they don't want it, obviously, and some that say they do.
In our first, in our first meeting that we had, we had maybe half a dozen, 10 people come to voice their opinion, and there were just a few that were for keeping it the way it's currently assessed, of course. The second meeting, there were two people, I think, was it was Marilyn and Kathy, I think. But yeah, there's not a whole lot of-
I think Kathy wasn't firmly in the support column either.
Yeah, yeah. But there, there were options for them to come. We did have two different workshops on it and-
Yeah, that's, that's a bummer, but.
Well, I think it speaks volumes that nobody's here to speak from, you know, any of the businesses in town.
That's what less-
That's what I was thinking.
Well, unless somebody, okay. Great. That's it.
I'll, I'll just say that it, you know, if, if we reduce it, $16,000 is a lot to manage to have quarterly committee meetings and, you know, we could hear from the city attorney, but if the levy isn't, if the assessment isn't levied this year, then it doesn't mean we couldn't restate it in the future either. So, that would just be this action, you know, for what's levied would just be for one year, but it doesn't mean F-Bid goes away. We're not necessarily changing the municipal code, we would just be reducing the levy to zero.
Okay. So, if we did, if we did just reduce it to zero and find that we need more, we could increase it back again?
Yeah, each year you go through this process to determine what the levy should be for that particular year. As long as the district isn't dissolved, then through the normal F-Bid re-levy process each year, you could set it to a, a different rate next year.
So, and currently, there's $17,000 in reserve that'd be carried over from last year.
So, that, that $17,000 is held over from last year. If we did do a $25, it's $16,000. So, at the end of this year, we should be able to see if that is enough for seed money and and to kind of follow through, and then from next year, we can kind of go from there because I could put it where it's at. But to me, what I'm, you're just saying that we're all community events. Most of our events, if you look at most of our huge events, rodeo, hops, all these things, they, Autorama, they have their own committees, their own people that are doing this thing. It's not downtown merchants, it's not, it's, it's a group of everybody from the community doing these events, and it's not such, so much the businesses doing this themselves. But I do agree that we need to have that seed money that if they want to start a new event, that there's something there that can help get something off the ground, but the majority of our events already have large boards and people that make these decisions and kind of go for their and help to recruit for the city.
And Councilmember Conley, the other thing too, is we will, we do have money in the, the budget for community promotion, so I believe there's $30,000 that we have in there for community promotion, and that could be used for those type of events as well.
And like the upcoming citywide yard sale, you got to get insurance. The Al Gray lighted parade needs insurance and all that. So, those are the things that, if we've got $17,000 in there now, we got money to start for next year and see where it goes.
And I think the real issue, you know, that we're, we're looking at is a lot of the businesses, either they, they don't really see the benefits or in the case of, you know, the events that the bid has put on, you know, movies, kids-free movies used to be something that, you know, a lot of people would attend and theoretically could shop when their kids are downtown. The movie theaters closed, you know, the shop Fortuna for the holidays wasn't as well. It didn't have the high level of participation that it has in the past. It just does not seem like there's a lot of appreciation for the events that the bid has done. It doesn't mean that we couldn't reinvent that and really put more energy, but overall, even with the full assessment, the way it is now, it's not a lot of, it's, it's a lot of time to manage it and not a lot of money. Again, there's a, there's a summary table in the staff report showing how much the bid generates, and when you look at the total assessment that comes citywide, it's about $45,000, and to have monthly meetings, it's a ton of effort for a small amount of, to distribute a small amount of money and especially with the lack of appreciation from the business community or desire to see a lot of the efforts that have been made. Not to say that it couldn't be made better, but I, again, I, I think it's better to have the business community and and community groups lead that effort rather than the city or a separate bid at this point. And one of the other sentiments, sentiments that was expressed was that, you know, hey, there's already a Chamber of Commerce, they're already putting out a newsletter, and then F-Bid has a separate newsletter. I think there was a sense that there was a lot of redundancy between the two organizations and why do we need both? If I want to be a chamber member, I'll elect to join.
And you were saying that the tourist and marketing money could be used for the Al Gray Parade?
Yes, and I, and I think that's one event that went pretty well. I mean, depending on who you talk to, if you ask some of the downtown merchants, they may say, well, we didn't generate any business for us, but it was like, it was a very fun atmosphere and and it seems like the community really liked it, but the business benefit other than kind of giving people recognition of downtown, it was, it was a fun event. It just, it's, I think it was questioned how much it really did for downtown businesses. I mean, so it's, it's mixed depending on who you talk to.
That's the one event that I would like to not see go away, because that's a, that's a fun community event, not necessarily just to bring people into the stores, but to bring people downtown and get to enjoy those. And I think the truckers like it too, because they can run their, run their truck two day or two nights in a row to this one and then, and it's gotten big here in Fortuna. So, that's one I, I don't want to see go away, but if they can take over that.
And that could be funded either through Measure W funds that are administered by the Chamber and steered by the Tourism and Marketing Committee, or potentially use community promotion funds if the city wanted to continue supporting that event, and I would seek to contract with the Chamber or another group who may want to put it on. You know, ideally, it may be like Savior Rica's trucker parade, you know, maybe have a nonprofit who could put something together for entries instead of having it be kind of a forced thing where, you know, you have the, the city trying to host that and put it on.
Okay, I think I'm going to open public comment and then we can finish up here. Anybody from the public like to speak on this item?
I'll go to me first. So, I have a question before I can throw out my comment. Because it's the assessment, how does the board work? Does the board, does it have to be a board? And to how often do they have to meet the bylaws or is that what we're assessing?
Yeah, so for, as long as the district remains, the board needs to stay composed and meet on whatever frequency the municipal code requires, because the bid will still be here. It has assets and it has funds that it needs to spend throughout the year.
I'd say currently that the meeting frequency is in the bylaws, it's not in the municipal code, and so what we'd seek to do is change it to quarterly with always having the ability for a special meeting if something came up.
Okay. If this seems kind of hokey, we did the $25, that's probably not going to kill anybody. I, I'm not an F-Bidian, I think that they go a little further.
You have the microphone.
I think we need a special budget just for that microphone.
It's, it's a very powerful microphone and it uses the batteries up because it's such a good microphone, it uses them quickly.
Could you start right from the start again?
Thank you. Okay. I'm just surprised somebody told you that you talk too much. That made me laugh. All right. To me, I would think that if we're going to do $25, I personally would like to see it go away, but if we're going to do $25, I would like to see the committee, the staff, whoever, sit down and say, this is what it's going to be used for. I think every time someone has to come to the board and ask for money, they need to have a clear idea of what the money is for, so you don't have people coming and asking for really off-the-wall things. I mean, we have people coming and ask for off-the-wall things like for Measure E and for Measure Z, for all of the things, because they don't understand, it has to be what we say it's going to be. I would like to see if the board continues for them to set those parameters for insurance for events, for seed money for events, and I don't want to see downtown get all the money. There are so many events that you're either all over the city or they're at Rona Park or they're at Newburgh Park, they're at Clinton and there are other places, and just because downtown says they need the money, Hops in Humboldt could come and say, why don't you guys pay for our insurance? The fireworks definitely needs insurance, because that's a community-driven thing, and the only way we have that event is because businesses give money. So, if businesses had to give a little bit less because F-Bid or the city could cover the insurance, that would be super helpful. But as far as downtown crying and saying that they need all the money, that's not true. They can re-figure their budget and they can re-figure the charge that they do for like citywide yard sale, for instance, they charge vendors to have a booth. If they need to raise the booth money, then they need to raise the booth money. But just because they say they need all the money doesn't mean they should get all the money. And I, as a business in town who I'm going to pay whatever it is, I don't agree that that's where the money should go. I also don't know how- I also don't know how $25 a business and the time it takes for the city to process that, all of that, I'm not sure how efficient that is either. So personally, I'd like to see us try it without, maybe with the seed money, with the 17,000 for the seed money this year, not having an assessment and see what happens.
Hi. I don't like public speaking. My name's Rachel Henry and I'm the Finance Office Supervisor, but I also offer another perspective. My husband and I own a business. He's a contractor. I know you guys present opportunities for people to go to the F-Bid meetings, but they're at like nine in the morning and my husband's at work. So I think that's why we don't get a lot of people there. But I also know from working the front desk and being in charge of customer service for 14 years, people hate paying the F-Bid. And what that does is they come in and they're like, well, if I say I make $80,000, I have to pay a higher F-Bid. So what they're doing is maybe they're giving us their net. So they're not fully reporting what their true, you know, gross receipts are. So we're already losing money that way. While I agree with the concept of F-Bid and the assessment, I really don't think we should do anything this year. I think you should see what happens with the 17,000. I know it seems like doing a flat fee would make it easier for us. Other than the extra form, it's still going to be hard. And we're already going to be asking citizens, we're already going to be dealing with citizens with a water sewer increase and you guys want to do a tax measure. So I think doing away with this would be beneficial to the business owners and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
As a former holder of a business license in Fortuna, not only was I required to pay the F-Bid fee, but I was also required to get a license for the county of Humboldt. And none of my business was done in this city. And most of it wasn't even done in Humboldt County, but I still had to pay that. So I questioned the same thing that everybody else said. What did F-Bid do for me? I also said the same thing to the county of Humboldt. And the ironic part was I had to pay a dollar to Governor Newsom too.
I never liked that dollar either. Anyone else like to say anything? Okay, we'll close public comment. So I personally am liking the idea of trying with no assessment this year and seeing how that goes and reassessing at the end of the next year, keeping F-Bid and having quarterly meetings and maybe having them work on a list of exactly what it should be spent for. And, and I agree with the fact that I don't think downtown should get all of it. I think a certain percentage of it should be kept as seed money maybe or, but the committee could work on something like that. That's my idea.
You never know when Strong Street or Redwood Village is going to want to do something, get a committee together. Strong Street used to have a strong presence down there.
Yeah, they did. So what does everybody think?
Well?
I think that if we don't do any assessment at all and we're just looking at the money that's there now as seed money, I, it's going to be gone this year. And then what do you start with? Then you're starting from nothing unless we put seed money in from the city and-
Well, if we, if we, if there's 17,000 in there and if we use 15,000, then we know that maybe we need to do that assessment next year so each year that we get that. It will give us an idea of how much we need to assess. And I actually, I like the idea of not charging anything for this year, but that's up to the rest of the council.
I'm fine with it. What do you see as, do you see any potential problems?
If there's not an assessment, the numbers that we already have are with $25, it's a pretty low amount. Again, I'd envisioned greatly scaling it back, having a flyer that we give out with our business licenses if that's feasible to say, here's the purposes of F-Bid. If you have ideas or want to start an event or have ideas for decoration or any of the purposes consistent with F-Bid, please come to the committee meetings. We could list the dates ahead of time and, and people could put those or contact the city manager and we could hear. But we're diminishing what the ability is of the bid to do anything. You know, we're not, we're generating enough money to hire an employee. I guess for me, the, the lack of recognition of the benefit and the lack of appreciation for the effort and the outcome of the different events, it doesn't seem to me that it's worth doing. I, I think the downtown events are great and I think that would be the only real loss is if they depend on a portion of that to assist them. I know they generate revenue in other ways. I have no idea how much, but I think the big question is, you know, downtown seems to be the only vocal group that wants to put that money to good use. And I don't know if they'll have the ability to generate that without the assessment. So that's the only hesitation. And I, they did, there was no email or correspondence. They dropped off a list of what all their expenses were for the year and it was about $19,000, but they didn't include any revenue information. I don't even know who it was. It was just a sheet that showed up on my desk. But there was no request, no letter saying, hey, we'd like this contribution. So it's unclear to me.
And there are only a few businesses involved in that.
Right.
And we also were told that Auto Expo doesn't contribute anything to the downtown merchants and they have that for all day Saturday and Friday. So there are other ways that downtown merchants can get revenue.
They sell booth space for, and they, you know, so they do generate revenue off Auto Expo and some of their other events. But it's unclear how much. Again, they haven't told the city what that is.
Let me try a motion and see where this goes.
Okay.
Okay. Knowing that even if we make some changes, it will have to come back on the resolution down the road. Okay, I'll move to adopt the F-Bid annual report with specified modifications of removing the core areas outlined in the report and to change the assessment of, to a flat fee of $25 annually for all businesses.
I don't want to do that. I mean, the other option is to disband F-Bid.
Right? It's not just disband F-Bid, it's just to disband the fee for next year.
The other option is to not levy an assessment and to not generate any more revenue. And we'd still have to have the quarterly meetings. There'd be no revenue, but it would not, it would not dissolve F-Bid. That's, the city attorney could go through the steps, but that's a whole different action.
And what we all expressed was to waive the assessment for 24, 25 and use the $17,000 carryover as seed money and see where it went and how it was handled.
Looking like it's going to die on the vine.
Yep, so there's no second on that one. So would, would you like to make the same motion without a fee?
No.
Okay, with somebody else?
I'll make a motion to accept the F-Bid report with no fee moving forward to 2024 and clear guidelines on the seed money of where that may be used.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Do we need roll call for this? Okay. So those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so. Okay, so city managers report.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. Let me just run through our upcoming meeting schedule. Our next regularly scheduled council meeting is on June 3rd at the regular time of 6:00 PM. Our next planning commission meeting is on May 28th at 6:00 PM. Our next Measure E meeting awaits out September 17th at the regular time. Our next Rona Community Recreation and Park District meeting is on June 5th, 2:30 PM at City Hall. And our next Fortuna Business Improvement District meeting will be on May 28th. So at that meeting, we'll report back to the Improvement District Advisory Committee on what the council's action was. And that'll be prior to our next regularly scheduled council meeting. So that'd be where we get that feedback. I have a few items to prevent, present for my verbal report. One of those is I made a presentation to the Headwaters Fund Board today and they really appreciate the project the city brought to them in 2020, which was to, we asked them for funding to help fund the mill site specific plan, to repurpose the mill site. A lot's happened since then. We have a new owner. We're almost complete with the specific plan and we have the potential to create a high number of jobs at the mill site. So they, they were really happy to hear about the progress and they were particularly happy because this is one of the few projects, if any, that they have that actually goes directly to replacing jobs that were lost as a result of the bankruptcy of, of the Headwaters acquisition and, and the bankruptcy from the Pacific Lumber Company. So I think they're really pleased and they want to run this up as a success. So it's really important for us to finish the project, get the mill site specific plan done. Right now, the timeline is to get the draft. I just received the, the draft for public review and we'll be releasing that soon. We'll be going to the Planning Commission sometime, we're thinking September, but we also have the environmental document that we're expecting to have in July. Then it'll go to the Planning Commission and we'll get it, we'll gauge what the community, community's desire for input is and ultimately bring it back to the council sometime around October for environmental document adoption, general plan update and zoning ordinance changes. So there's going to be a lot that, that comes in a short period of time and we're still developing a strategy for public outreach. But I'll say that Sherri's been integral with that and she's really helping to guide the process and review the documents as that's moving forward now. Another thing that's really exciting, there's a group, Mickey and Sons, that promotes a number of events that cater to the Spanish-speaking community and they are proposing to do a Jirapayo Ranchero, which is, and I'll just say it's a Mexican rodeo. I don't have a direct definition, but from the staff level, we're all very excited about it. They're proposing to do that at the rodeo grounds on July 6th and it seems like it'll be an event that is well-attended by a large segment of the community. And, and I think that they'll have the rodeo board support. We're kind of, our General Services Superintendent walked out with the promoter, but they're expecting a pretty heavy attendance and it'll be a fun event. We'll go from July 3rd to the July 6th Jirapayo Ranchero to what's after that. Then our, we have our rodeo, the carnival and rodeo that, that come on the following week, 14th? 13th. The Roni Redonda and then the following week is rodeo. So it's going to be a lot of activity come the 3rd, starting at the 3rd of July and then going for about a month. So we're excited to have a new event like that, especially one that's coming from, you know, a separate group and the city isn't having to lift that up. And it seems like it's going to be a lot of fun. Looking at some of the videos, it's a different, different, different thing and it'll be, I think, well-attended by the community. So we're going to do our best to support that to happen. In other interesting news, there's a citizens group that approached me and they, they have interest in doing what they can to help see the Fortuna Theater reopened. And so it was nice. I, I encouraged them to meet with me and the chamber staff at a Tourism, you know, to, to float the idea of kind of supporting their grassroots effort through the Tourism and Marketing Committee. And so it's, some folks are interested. There, there's a long way to go, but there's a group of people I think that are going to be forming over time and will be helping to kind of steer that in a way that the community decided which way they can support that theater and maybe get it reopened and maybe re-envision what it is. So we'll be providing support to that group to see what can happen there. I met with the Great Redwood Trail Executive, new executive director, Elaine Hogan. She's a former Blue Lake City Council person and now she's the director for the Great Redwood Trail and a staff member, Hannah Barti with the Coastal Conservancy. And they're excited about looking at the Great Redwood Trail in Fortuna and other places they have, they released their Great Redwood Trail Master Plan. And so they're looking for input on that and it's, it's generally consistent with what the city would have expected to see there and it includes our projects and attachments to Strong Street Trail and other trails in the city. So the report looked good and they categorized the portion from Fortuna, or excuse me, from Alton to Lolita as a Tier One project. And that's all grouped in one thing, but they're envisioning that being one of the areas that would happen sooner than later. And then I've been working with the Coastal Conservancy. We're still working on negotiation of the purchase of the property along the Eel River for a riverfront park. And now I'm working with the Coastal Conservancy. They're applying for grant funds and trying to help us find matching funds to buy the remainder of the property across the Eel River. So it's an ongoing saga and I'm convinced at the end we'll be successful, but it's one of the most challenging acquisition projects I've ever dealt with. And then lastly, I'll just say that I attended the Chamber Mixer last Wednesday at Lotus Mountain and it was really impressive to see kind of what their abilities are and the great designs that they have there. And they, I don't know how many T-shirts they ran off and they were, had their machines stitching the hats and they gave everybody a hat and they had their shirt machines pressing and doing the design, some really beautiful Lotus Mountain designs at the, at the, at the event. So they produced everything while we were there and it was just great to see. And they have a lot of wonderful designs and they produce some really nice products, including the banners that the city has posted on its poles and then a number of signs that are around. So it was great to see the capabilities of a local business like Lotus Mountain. So that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to council reports. Councilmember Conley?
Thank you. I did not go to REDAC and thank you, Mr. Losi, for filling in for me because it was my wife's birthday and I would have died, so I elected not to do that. Other than that, excited to see the activities coming up for the summer and the conversations happening about the Parks Department and how we can better kind of grow Parks and Recs and, and get that out into the public more and, and make Fortuna a place that people want to come and actually play sports here.
Thank you. Councilmember Losi, don't talk too much.
I won't. I'll keep it short. I have a LAFCO meeting coming up on Thursday and I haven't attended a meeting since the last council meeting.
Wow. Councilmember Mobley?
I have nothing to report.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Oh, I've got a few things. Had our historical commission meeting and it was interesting because we literally spanned the United States. We had people from New York and Pennsylvania come through. So that was a good thing. The Depot Museum's YouTube is going strong, their YouTube channel. They've got three videos that have been risen to the top and are interesting. One is a tour of Fortuna from '85, '86, a presentation by Jerry Rhodey on Jack London in Fortuna. He actually was here. And then there was a Fortuna rodeo video from 1986 with all the events that surround it, Chili Cook Off and all that. So those have risen to the top. We had an H-Cog meeting and we got to see a beta rollout of a new public engagement portal that you can log in on and you can track a project through. You can see what's happening on that project. It is not completely fleshed out yet, but you can see that the, the promise is there and when they'll get it going. The first one I think that's going to be available is going to be the Fern Bridge and access into Ferndale. So that'll be interesting to see that come along. And another thing that happened at H-Cog that was, it's always a good thing, is a new agreement for the coming year for supplemental patrols on Highway 36, 96 and 169 because those are areas with a lack of coverage. And if you read the reports on what's done, the person doing the patrol on those roads do, they have citizen assists outnumber citations by 10 to 1. The people, flat tire, run out of gas, lost, you name it. So those are some of the good things that happen through H-Cog. And that's my report for that.
Thank you. And I have nothing to report.
What?
Yep. So my, my life has been baseball. So we are going to adjourn to closed session. Conference with labor negotiators, city negotiator, city manager Merritt Perry, employees, organization, Fortuna Police Employees Association in accordance with Section 54957.6 of the Government Code and conference with labor negotiators, city negotiator, city manager Merritt Perry, employees, association, organization. Is that the same thing?
No, one's FPA and one's FPA.
Fortuna Employees Association and Unrepresented Management Group in accordance with Section 54957.6 of the Municipal- 54957.6 of the municipal code.
And I'm going to re-recuse myself from item number A because my wife works for the police department.
Okay.
And then I would just suggest we do the FEA, the, the police second. That way we could have Councilmember Conley participate in the first one and then recuse from the second leave when we continue with the FEA.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to move to closed session.
Second.
Okay, adjourn to motion, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn to closed session.
Recording stopped.